November fifth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Grand Forks County Council will come forward and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. All right, can you add on the agenda if the approval of the minutes from prior meeting, we have a motion, so.
Second.
Ruston. Second, I, Commissioner Hagan. All in favor of the motions, taking five by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed. Then the next item is the order of agenda, and I believe we have a couple of changes to make to the order of agenda.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to add under six A, planning and zoning, and under six B is employed N D S U extension.
All right, for a minor motion like this, I think we can combine the two. We have a motion to add two items, one for the N D S U extension issue of hiring, and then the second one is the, the other one is the planning and zoning meeting. Do you have a second, Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank. And then the, the next following item is the consent of agenda. Uh, that consists of bills, employee status changes, the September financial report, accounting deed, uh, that's in the packet, and overtime. Would any commissioner like anything pulled to be discussed? A moment of approval. Motion by.
Second.
Ruston, second by Commissioner Ross. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Passed. And now we have these, both of us, for Deputy. Would you state your name for the record, sir?
Of course, Judge Jason McCarthy.
Yeah.
So we'll just go through it, repeat after me, please. I, Dr. Sally Stroch.
Hi, Dr. Sally Stroch.
Of Grand Forks County, North Dakota.
Of Grand Forks County, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Grand Forks County Corner.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Grand Forks County Corner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Ross, do you have a. Take a couple pictures if you take one of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You're gonna take a picture. Sorry, really excited.
I hope families can hear.
Okay.
I'm not a very good photographer. Thank you. Yes, a good thing I brought my purse.
Congratulations.
And with this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Really, I'm gonna sell.
Um, I can give you my. Five zero nine. Five zero eight. One, five, two, four. Thank you. For today. Give it to Gracie. Did we make.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, congratulations, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is, uh, now six A, and that is planning and zoning, Commissioner Ross.
Okay. Uh. Mister Chair, members of the commission, uh, we met at three o'clock today, uh, the Planning and Zoning Committee, and, um, it was about, uh, chapter thirty-one of the Grand Forks County zoning resolution. Um, the amendment is addressed as permitted versus special uses. And. We, uh. We talked about. Uh, thirty-one. At length. And. Under, uh, permitted uses. Um, what we did was, and line four talked about under permitted uses residential care facility serving six or fewer persons in a single family detached dwelling on an existing lot of record. Um, so we took these one at a time, and, um, um, Matt. Matt, Matt Fisher made the motion to approve, uh, seconded by Commissioner Ruston, and, um, Matt, Mark, and Rebecca Osowski, and myself all voted yes. Um, the next one was thirty-one dash three, which, uh, still under permitted uses, talked about daycare facilities serving twelve or fewer persons in a single family detached dwelling. To remove that. And, um, it was a motion by Mark, seconded by Matt, and, uh, Mark, Matt, and Rebecca, and myself all voted yes to remove that. Um, okay, so, under special uses.
Commissioner Ross, can I.
Yep.
We are talking about the section that deals with the airfield preservation district, correct?
Correct, yep.
Because there are two things, there's one, the preservation district, one's a reserve district. This is the preservation district that you're amending?
Correct, well, it's that ordinance, thirty-one. Yeah, thirty-one dash one.
And it applies to both of them. Pardon me, Mr. Chair, does that apply to both? Okay, I think it applies to both, just not.
So then, under thirty-one dash four, special uses, uh, line seven was a daycare facility serving twelve or fewer persons in a single family detached dwelling. Um, Mark made the motion, Matt seconded, and Mark, Matt, Rebecca, and myself voted yes to add that to special uses. And then, uh. Under, uh, line sixteen. Um, this was to add residential care facility serving six or fewer persons in a single family detached dwelling on an existing lot of record. Matt Fisher made the motion, Mark seconded, Matt, Mark, Rebecca, and myself all voted yes. So, um, I guess, uh. At this point. Pretty much talked about everything that we did. Um, I guess the Air Force is here. I would like to give them the opportunity to talk about this before we do anything, so at this time, I would ask Representative of the Air Force to come up and talk. They should have been at the three o'clock meeting, and they weren't, I don't, I don't know who did the invite, but.
What else? Would you identify yourself, please, and the office that you represent?
Uh, so I'm Captain Matthew Bowen, uh, I have here on behalf of the three nineteenth. And, uh, the legal office there, and so. We're, we're concerned about the changes adjacent to the, the proposed changes adjacent to the Grand Forks Air Force Base. Uh, specifically, uh, chapter thirty, the air preserve, airfield preservation district. And, you know, our understanding is this stems from a couple properties that are in that airfield preservation district that have some issues with their marketability means due to them being lawful, non-conforming to subsequent regulation uses, uh, grandfathered in. And. Now, it is our understanding that the, uh, planning board met, and we're looking to make changes to chapter thirty-one, which is the airfield preserve district, uh, which is different from the airfield preservation district where the two properties fall. Uh, to that end, we are, um, opposing and concerned about the changes made to the airfield preserve district, chapter thirty-one tonight, in so much as it is an attempt to kind of make that chapter better for the, uh, ultimate change to the zoning designation of those two properties. Uh, but, you know, briefly, we're just gonna go through the. So the ultimate concern is changing those, those properties from uh, airfield preservation district to air preservation. Now, the ultimate goal of any zoning ordinance is to, uh, for the promote public health, safety, and general wear, welfare. And to effectuate that purpose, chapter thirty was, uh, created specifically promoting the safety in the airfield preservation district. Uh, and knows that the properties are, uh, to preserve that safety, uh, they want to preserve the open space adjacent to the airfield runways. This airfield preservation district is not unique to Grand Forks Air Force Base. There, there is an airfield preservation district adjacent to the runway at the International Airport as well. And so any changes that are kind of being made are, you know, should also be considered in kind of the grander scope of, yes, there, there are these properties that we are empathetic to the situation that they're in, but it could have larger and broader impacts on the effectuation of the goal of safety, sir.
Yes, do you give an example of all those safety concerns that isn't having a daycare there?
Well, so, the, the ultimate goal of chapter thirty in airfield preservation district is to maintain as much open space as possible. So if you look at chapter thirty, and you look at the permitted uses, it's, it's very narrow, there's only the three current things there, and they're all, uh, basically ground level or, or near ground level, it's agricultural, and then that you have accessory uses as, uh, well. So that would include accessory to agriculture, barns, uh, maybe a, uh, granary or some sort of, but the concern is populating these areas, it is. If, God forbid, there, there is an accident, and when you look at the studies in the FFA, FAA and Air Force planning adjacent to the runway, there, there's, uh, if an accident happened, you know, sixty-five, seventy percent of the time it happens in this zone, and twenty percent in this zone in support. And so the, the concern in, in why we would support keeping these as, you know, the airfield preservation district and keeping that very open is to reduce any unfortunate collateral consequences if there is an accident of, you know, if you have a daycare, if you have populated facilities, now the plane goes down, it's not just, you know, taking out, unfortunately, you know, potentially the pilots, but it could be taking out multiple people on the ground as well. And so that's the primary goal of the airfield preservation district, is to keep that open space, keep it very limited uses, and that's what we would support. Now, we understand, and, and we are empathetic to the situation of the, uh, Doll, that uh, Wilkinson property, and that they have these grandfathered homes that have a lack of marketability. And so, I, I apologize, uh, to Commissioner Ross earlier, I wish we had been at the three o'clock, as we might have been able to provide some thoughts and insights there. Our solution would be to allow as a special use in the airfield preservation district to have single family home, and to only make that change. That would allow the current residents, the current property owners, to seek a special use permit, so that their homes could become lawfully conforming to current regulations, that would give them the marketability they need, but it would also give that district some procedural protections against future development and future, uh, applications for development that would be contrary to the safety concerns of that kind of a district where open space is really, uh, a safety and primary concern. So, that, that's kind of procedurally what we would like to support. Uh, my colleague has some thoughts on the, kind of, the, the Air Force's interest more broadly, but I'm also happy to take any more questions on the, kind of, the procedural changes that we support to your zoning amendment, in so much as we are trying to prevent that area from being ultimately rezoned.
I do have another question, so. With what you propose, that still limits their ability to, to sell to a great degree, as you well are aware of. And so it's, I mean, the, the empathy I can appreciate, but if the airport, Air Force Base has a strong opinion on the zoning of this property, it probably should show that empathy in the form of a check to the Will Chrisley and Doll families rather than try to continue to hamstring their ability to sell in, in the event of a plane crash. I, I think that that isn't a very realistic concern, and a plane crash on a single family home is pretty much, uh, just as bad as a plane crash on a, 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 a multi-family. You, you know what I'm kind of saying, that's a, I feel a long shot to plan to do a plane crash and zone them out of a, of a family property that's been a family that it's prior to the Air Force's existence. And so I, I can't say, I mean, I, I can also use empathy, I empathize with what the Air Force Base is doing here, but at the end of the day, like, the decision we have to make comes down to, do we fix something that was done without their knowledge, you know, close to two decades ago? Because of a potential, or, or do we not, because of a potential plane crash on the property? I, I, I feel like that's a very, very far-fetched concern, if, if I'm using any logic that rings true to you?
No, I, 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 I hear you, Commissioner, and, uh, I'll respond to a few points. So first, uh, I am not licensed in the state of North Dakota, uh, I am licensed in the state of Maine. Um, so, I can tell you in my state, and, um, that a special use permit would run with the land, and so if the current occupants were able to get a special use permit, if we changed the, the chapter thirty to allow single family homes to be eligible for a special use, and those families did get the special use permit, that special use permit would run with the land in my state. I, I can't speak to your, um, statutory framework as to that.
So, so, is there like a problem with the way it was drawn up at the planning and zoning meeting? Because the two complaints that the Air Force Base used in a letter to this commission have to do with multi-family and daycare centers, those were specifically addressed in the planning and zoning committee, and that's what's before us now, and so I've, if there's additional concerns that weren't in that original letters, at least not the way I remember it.
So, uh, I will acknowledge that there was not, uh, those concerns highlighted in the original letter, um. You know, my expertise in, uh, my, my civilian, uh, capacity is actually land use, and so, uh, I was asked to help with this project and to help guide this process, uh, with the, the three nineteenth legal office. And, and so I, I do hear you that you're, you're feeling maybe a little blindsided by some new, uh, frustrations or new concerns by the Air Force.
Uh, they just don't seem valid to me.
Okay, so.
A plane crash? Well. It, it is, I mean, that seems so outlandish, that, so, so they're stuck with whatever decision was made in two thousand and six as a plane by strapping property.
Well, and, and so the solution that we have would be for chapter thirty to be amended to allow a single family home a special use permit. The Dolls and the Will Presidents could then get the special use permit, that creates the marketability in their, because now they're, they're lawfully conforming to current regulations, their property is owned in that situation, and that gives them the marketability without having to make larger and broader changes to the zoning regulation that I understand the, the likelihood of, of plane crash is low, but as you populate the area substantially, the impact of a low risk becomes larger, and that, that's really what the concern is. Um, now. Why, why do we support single family homes in that, uh, area, but not, uh, you know, childcare or, uh, multifamily like you raised? Because if we're doing so in the context of a special use permit, it still has to go, undergo additional scrutiny, and we have the uh, procedural assurances that not everybody under the sun is gonna go get these special use permits, they're, they're gonna have to go before planning and zoning boards, and they're gonna have to show that, hey, we're building this second, or we're building this third house, it's not really contrary to the policy, uh. What is not contrary to the policy is finding a legal way to legitimize these two homes that, as you've acknowledged, Commissioner, have been there since before the zoning regulation, and that's what we really want to support, because we do want to be good neighbors to these families, and we, we do want them to have the marketability in their title and to be able to, uh, if they choose to sell their property and to do so, if they, you know, are having problems with insuring their property because it's a non-conforming use, we, we want to alleviate that burden without having broader, uh, more strategic impacts on the zoning, which could have detrimental effects to our, our safety, uh, plan, and the plan that the county commissioners have, uh, effectuated in their zoning. Uh, uh, in the response to the eminent domain question, you know, the the zoning ordinance was developed with the airfields in mind, but it was not the Air Force's ordinance that created the, uh, marketability issue.
But so if it wasn't for the Air Force involvement, this would have been resolved back to the way it was a long time ago. You at least acknowledge that.
I, I don't know if that is the case, because like, uh. Well, there's also the same district adjacent to the International Airport, so. You know, I, I understand it's not having the same impact there, but there, the, the zone itself and the ordinance itself was created with airfields in mind, not specific to Grand Forks Air Force Base, and that's why I would say in, in this case, you know, an emitted domain is probably not appropriate, uh, since the Air Force is not the entity legally doing the taking, if there is a taking to be, uh, acknowledged.
Would you have your colleagues speak for?
Yes, absolutely.
Open it up with the one question.
Thank you, sir. My name is Captain Rachel Chain, I'm an attorney here at Grand Forks Air Force Base. I have been in Grand Forks for two years, I'm from Texas, so this is all new to me and all this weather and everything, but I have enjoyed my time here, and I'm so grateful for everything that Grand Forks has offered myself and my family, it's a great community and I love it so much. Um, so I understand a lot of the concerns that you have raised, um, Mr. Rust, Rust, I'm sorry. Rust, Rust. Ruston, sorry about that, sir. Um, and I, and I do understand, and advise, and I understand that, um, you wanna understand the the grander scheme of why we're interested and why single family homes are more appropriate than, um, the daycare facilities, which, or ultimately multi-family homes or larger properties that now are encumbering these properties that aren't just lower in population.
Those, those were stricken from, in, in mind and zoning, that wasn't even on the table.
I, I under, I understand, and that, that was the initial, I guess, initial thoughts based on, um, the original, um, zoning, um, considerations, and that was addressed in Coleman Rose, um, led, initial rep, letter to the commission. Um, and then it, I guess, reduced to these two that have been voted by the planning committee, uh, today, but it's not just um, that we're not concerned about the single family homes, as my colleague had mentioned, we understand the burden that has been placed on these two families because of these, this, um, preservation district versus, uh, reser, reservation. Reserve, the poverty, uh, but changing the reserve district, ultimately, right now, it is known as the preservation district, and the ultimate goal, in my understanding, is that we are potentially looking to rezone that preservation district of these properties to the resident district, which will allow for these other, um, special uses, and we are concerned because right now we might have a mission that doesn't fly too many, um, too many missions or too many stories in the air at the moment, and seems fairly quiet, that the Air Force Base is going to be around for a long time, and there are future missions that could become more encumbersome to the area, and this having this unencumbered area in front of the flight line will significantly, um, help our, our mission set for the future, but also make sure that they are not encumbered by these future missions as well. So for example, um, recently, the Ellsworth Air Force Base, um, has published a draft environmental assessment where they are analyzing the movement of the B ones to our, um, to our base for, um, because of renovations on their base, and the B ones are a lot louder, they're going to operate a lot more missions, for example, they're gonna be operating two to four stories a day, so that's gonna be a huge impact on these, on these properties, and by changing the rezoning of these properties to allow for more families, now we have potentially a nuisance on these family homes and, um, potential encumbersance of the lands when we are flying more missions over this, this property. So accidents are a concern, but also the the nuisances and the noise complaints and other things that might come from other flying missions and increased stories in the area, and having unencumbered land in this area really benefits both um, the Air Force, but also the county making sure that we're not impacting future landowners who don't really understand the, the property that they're buying, because it's now a new, um, a new zoning area, does that, does this make sense? Like, it's for the, it's not just how it is now, but for the future and how future missions might impact this area, where now we have a lot more residential areas, or a lot more daycares operating over this, this land that the base is flying over constantly, day in and day out.
Sure. I mean, I guess I understand, and I just don't agree. I, I, I don't think that that's gonna be a real hotspot for a bunch of daycares, so if there's planes flying over a day and a day out, I don't think that's also far-fetched, just as much as that, I'm saying. And I think if you're buying land right next to an Air Force Base, you're aware of the fact that you're gonna get airplanes, I mean, that's kind of buyer beware, and he talked about affecting future buyers, while currently what's being affected is the current owners that predate the base in many cases, so I, I just, I, I, I fail to, uh, connect the same dots you're connecting, and so I don't, I don't agree.
But, and I understand, and that's why there were several, or a solution or proposal from our, um, from the Air Force on how, on how we could resolve the issue to the current owners and, um, help them be able to sell the property that they have had, or to operate the property in a way that is in accordance with the current, um, re, or the partner, the, excuse me, the current zoning of this property, rather than open up this entire property for rezoning, not just their property, but this entire area for rezoning into a much broader use type, uh, area, um, with the reservation district rather than the preservation district.
If you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to add one thing. I was on a Zoom call this morning, and the, all around the country, these preservation districts and reserve districts are a major topic. There's encroachment on bases all over the place, and we are fortunate here to have a lot more space than most people do. But by the same token, we have a whole squadron of B ones flying daily, straight out over the top of the, off the runway, north and south. Of course, it's dangerous, they do have air crashes from time to time, probably more on training bases than, than on active basis, but I think that the, uh, option of a special use permit, which means you can sell it to someone. But I think that the uh option of a special use permit, which means you can sell it to someone else who wants to live there. Solves the whole problem. I think it's better than trying to, I I don't think it should be changed from a preservation district to a reserved district. Because that I think ought to go up to sixteenth air force or the air combat command folks to. To get a ruling on that rather than just to worry about it local base level.
I don't understand why they were, what, I don't understand why they were concerned about a ruling. If they cared that much, they would have bought it all from under the owners. Years ago.
Well, they, a- again, they don't have eminent domain power.
They don't have no skin to gain, they're just.
Well, then, you know, that has that been taken up to the higher headquarters? Has there been, has there been a demand for that to be done? Uh, we talked about it a couple of times at meetings now, but. Maybe that could be done in the future, but in meantime. We can protect these folks by not changing the whole district for. Or ordinances, but simply to provide a special use permit. And I believe, maybe you can help me with that. I'm a lawyer myself, but I I used to be in JAG, by the way. Uh but um I won't, I assume it runs with the land uh here. Maybe we can find that out. Uh but that that would not affect the ability to sell. And anybody who buys the place when there's a runway over there would know that planes would do go over the top, so. If if they can find the buyer, that person is still going to buy it. Whether it's a special use permit or whether you made major changes such as changing from a reserve to. Preservation to a reserve district, so. I don't really like the idea of changing from one to the other when there is a perfectly. Valid solution, it looks like to me. It might be another meeting of the planning and zoning. But I may do it right.
Robert Wilkinson?
Yes.
Like to speak to what the air force is talking about, since we're talking about the special use permit. Um, that's not going to solve anything because it's going to be the same problem right now. And that was the problem that I had when I tried to sell it last year. I lost several buyers because of the variance issue. The special use permit is going to be looked the same way by lenders and nobody's going to be able to find a property, which means they're not going to be able to sell it. And it's also going to reduce the value of the property because I've got to have a special use permit just to live there. Um, I've already lost sales and it's, you know, the whole idea is for a single use. Or a single family dwelling on a lot of record. This has been a single family dwelling for close to a hundred years. Um. Nobody's asking to build, to build on, to make a substantive issue there. All we're asking is for us to be a permitted use in the zoning. So that we can legally sell it without losing value. Um. And the house at the zone at the air airport. Was purchased. I don't have all the information. Lane Magnuson does have the information about the the sale of that house when the zoning changed. So I mean, that's all I've got. I mean.
Can you explain why a special use permit wouldn't give you the ability to sell? A single family home to anybody who, and why that would affect lenders if you have a legal right to do so? I mean, I think that's a question.
On the property, it's no different than having to have a variance to to put a new roof on your house. It is, it's, you know, the 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 potential fires doesn't see it as any different. When I have to have a permit just to live there. That's, that's where the problem comes in and that's, like I said, I've lost three sales because of that.
Yeah, and I'm aware of the situation from our prior meetings, but I'm. I'd like to hear from the state's attorney's office. Uh, they can't do it in the spur of the moment either. I'm sorry about that, but.
See, all this keeps dragging it out.
Pardon me?
All this keeps dragging it out. Another month, another month, another month, another month. I mean, they had time to deal with this three months ago.
So, Mr. Chair. Before the meeting, I did talk to Lee Magnuson. He recommended. Approval of everything that we did today at the planning and zoning game, so um.
But are you saying that changes from a preservation district to a reserve?
Exactly what I read in here.
Yeah, if that's the case, I'm a little concerned that it maybe needs to be looked at by someone other than the local base legal. Sixteenth Air Force or.
But you know how long that takes.
What?
You know how long that takes.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Once we look wrong, it's too late to fix it.
Yeah.
I don't see why um it's, can we answer the the question quickly within the next meeting? As to whether a special use permit would allow someone to buy it and and. Pass for ownership with.
I'm not interested in those kicking the can for these families and lenders. I I I move approval of what.
Yeah, Mr. Ford, can you comment on any of this, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hagan, so. Why the special use permit wouldn't work for the homeowner? Is if there isn't a change in the zoning, which is what P N Z is recommending. If the homeowner is selling the property, I used to be a mortgage lender. If the homeowner is selling the property. And I want to buy the property, but I need a mortgage to buy the property, I cannot get an appraisal or title insurance. Because of the current zoning. So if you do a special use permit for the homeowner. And I still want to buy the property with financing, I I won't be able to get an appraisal because of the zoning and comparables. And I won't be able to get title insurance. It doesn't, the special use permit won't help. The person who needs financing. That's the issue.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, I would just like to add, this is a recommendation of planning and zoning. I would recommend that you do uh. I I think Mr. Russet was going to make a motion uh that you do a uh. Roll call vote uh for all of us to see how we feel on this. But that was a recommendation of planning and zoning was to switch it, so uh.
I will have an ever, a question for the air force. Your, what's uh our county administrator said, was it background on on all of that? Is that accurate? That with a special use permit, there might be funding problems with Mr. Wilkinson said too.
Well, so, once again, I'm not licensed in the state of North Dakota, so my knowledge on title insurance. Uh. It is uh. In the state where I'm licensed. My understanding in the state where I work, a special use permit. Whether you're permitted by right or permitted by special use permit, it's still a permission. You still have that permitted status. That's, that's true in the state of Maine. I can't speak to the state of North Dakota. It would seem um contrary uh to what I would think would be common sense. That a a lender or title insurance would refuse to lend or insure on a permitted use. Regardless of how the permission came about. However, um, Mr. Ford. Former mortgage uh lender in North Dakota and I would uh. You know, somewhat defer to to his uh experience on that, you know, as it relates to your locality. Because once again, my my experience is um that of another state. But it it does seem peculiar that especially. Whether it's permitted by right or permitted by a special use permit, it's so permitted and and I'm uh. I don't see a practical reason why a a lender title insurance would. Now, I I could see a title insurer not wanting to ensure against the zoning. And that's typically a uh an exclusion in the title sharing. Anyway, they never ensure against the zoning regulations. But uh, once again, I'm I'm not a North Dakota attorney, so I I couldn't speak to the nuances uh. I, you know. We we do still have the greater concern of. We want to match the current use of the Wilkinson and the Dahl property to the current use allowed. That is the goal we're trying to get to. That is the goal that that they're trying to get to. Our larger concern, though, is changing the entire district. To a an entirely different district that has more development rights. And uh, you know, I I I understood and I heard the commissioner when he said, well. This isn't exactly going to be an area that people's going to want to build in and we're not going to see all this mass development. Maybe true. But when it's zoned and that becomes uh permitted. Um or permitted through a special use permit, it opens up that possibility. And it creates the lack of predictability and the lack of control. And that um from the air force's perspective, whereas the the zoning already kind of allows. We have a certain foreseeability of what in there and what's going to be there in the future. And uh. Whereas your zoning ordinance, um, you know, so. Let's say you did change the zone, these zones to be the uh air reserve district. Well, if someone wanted to put in a special use like a daycare. Uh and they wanted to do that, the only. Individuals within a half mile of the proposed property are given a notice under your your procedural zoning orders. Well, the air force, the runway might be more than half a mile away, so we would have no procedural. Due process right or to that notice, but obviously be a huge concern. We we would not want to see, you know, daycare and lots of kids who could be, you know, now placed into these this danger zone. Uh place there, so. So really, what the zoning ordinance does is it gives the air force predictability. It gives uh them a certain understanding about what the current use is, what the future use could be. And and how we match that with the impact that the air force has on that, you know, that those properties. And so to the extent. We we would severely oppose changing the district from one from one to another. And if there is a solution to be had in trying to match that current use to the current use allowed. I think that comes best by keeping those properties in the air preserve district. But maybe amending what is allowed in that district in very tight parameters. So that we can uh match that current use to the current use allowed and give them the marketability that they want. And and so uh respectfully, the proposals, the amendments tonight, if they go too sweeping. Uh and and we've imposed those, but we do want to be a continued partner in helping to find a solution for these affected families.
Thank you. Question for the committee uh. Reading now the the ordinances in front of us, when you were reading what's being accepted and what's being changed. But I think you answered the question that we are changing from an air. Airfield Preservation District to an airfield Reserve District by those changes. Is that accurate? Because I think that's a.
Yeah.
Alright.
So I. Mr. Chair, I would, I would uh. I would make uh a motion to approve the planning and zoning recommendation. Uh. As as I said forth earlier and uh. I would ask for a re- uh a roll call vote by everybody individually.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll start with Commissioner Ross.
Yes, your, what is your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Russet?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Peach?
No.
And I don't know, and the reason that I'm, I'm saying no is I think it's premature to make a change. Uh drastic as changing the the district itself when there's still, we don't know for sure that this other method might not have worked. Uh but.
But also passes three to two. Can I speak to that? But, Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes.
So the reason why I mean yes is because originally when this came before us. The air force provided a letter with their concerns. We then went back to planning and zoning and addressed those exact concerns verbatim that they had in their letter. Now, nowhere in that initial letter that I can recall that it talked about planes dropping out of the sky on daycare centers. You know, across from the the highway from the air force base. And I think that that is so far-fetched that. These families need to be made whole by my eyes and so I believe today as I've been. Mission, we've done the right thing and made them whole so they can now move on with their lives and sell their properties as they see fit. I don't think there's going to be a a bunch of special use permits granted for daycare centers or. All by family buildings out there because those come to us as well.
Right.
So you're talking about, and and there's a height restriction as well that still applies. It's like thirty five or forty feet. So I don't know how they mix, you know, apartment buildings, you can throw under thirty five feet, but that'd be one of. Heck of a wide footprint, you know, so I I I think we're safe here. I I apologize for um. The air force base may be feeling like their consideration or their concerns weren't considered rather, but. I think at the end of the day, um. Yeah, even those that oppose this would feel differently if it was their own property that basically. For lack of a better term, was evidently domained by the county of Grand Forks all their knowledge eighteen years ago. So I think what we did today was we we turned something that was done incorrectly, we did it correctly. So I'm very proud of what we did today. Thank you for my time.
Yeah, the only thing I disagree with is occasionally wheels fall off airplanes. Fuel tanks fall off airplanes. More more accidents happen on takeoffs and landings than anywhere else. So it is a somewhat dangerous position and I I I get that too, but uh I just uh. It's still the topic of a concern to the air force and. Stumbled into it in the Zoom meeting this morning and uh. You know, what's done, so alright. Well, the air force could always buy land from yours and do whatever they want with it. They got more money than whoever might buy it does, I know that. Alright, let's move on.
Yeah.
Thank you all of you for coming today and uh.
Thank you for having.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, the next thing is the uh. I guess, Ms. Harson, are you on the line or on Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Thanks for waiting. It didn't think it'd take that long to get to you.
No, not a problem.
Uh rather than have me explain it, why don't you just explain to the commission why it is that you're on Zoom today asking for us to uh approve. Your request.
Yes, so thank you very much for having um me on here. Um Ca- Caitlin Landis, who is the AGA Natural Resources Extension Agent in Grand Forks County. Um has resigned and so we we would like to um go into partnership again with you as the county. Um Grand Forks County Commission to refill this position. Um because there is uh the N D S U based policy, so anytime there's an agent opening. We do um um, we're basically requesting that you are willing to fulfill the base policy agreement again. Um so which what that means is um uh extension agents are N D S U employees. But fifty percent of the salary is paid for by the county, the other fifty percent of the salary is paid by the state. And then a hundred percent of the benefits for this employee is covered by N D S U. Um but then the operating piece, so office space, printer, all those kinds of things. Um that is covered by the county. Um so we, I'm just asking that to see if you guys would be willing to um continue this partnership. And so we can get the position refilled.
Any questions? I think we can approve that request.
A second.
Any further discussion? Should I have her go first? You're the one who did it. Alright, all in favor of the approval of the request, the N D S U extension, certified by San Oni?
Alright.
That, you know, a one, done, passed, you know. Alright, thank you for waiting.
Yes, and thank you very much for having me.
Alright. Alright. Alright, uh. That's all Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, thank you for this opportunity, uh, two subjects that I wish to. Talk with you on, uh, neither of them did I receive in time. To get on the agenda when I asked Ms. Nelson to put me on the agenda for this week. So that information is. Here in this handout, uh, in there is. The. Uh, email correspondence that Mister Ford had with you upon this. Subject as well for reopening the ramp and. To. Bring to, bring to you a bit of an update on the ramp in the. Overall construction process that is ongoing, um. In here from, from A two S is the recommendation from Mister Clevins. That we're at a point to where the work will be. Coming to a pause for the winter. Essentially this week, next week, uh, his recommendation for complete reopening on the ramp. For the winter is no sooner than November eleventh, no later than November eighteenth. To reopen at the, at the county's, at the commission's direction. That being said, that doesn't mean the parking ramp construction is done, there's still a significant amount of. Concrete repair and replacement to be done in the ramp, both on. The upper level incline and the south portion of the third floor of the ramp. The contractors have the condition of the deck, the condition of the inclines. To a satisfactory state that Mister Clevins doesn't feel that we would have debris falling from it or any issues that way. It is not sealed, it isn't anything to that nature, so that portion of the deck will still leak from. Level to level, from third to second and so forth, structurally, it is okay to reopen for the winter. Uh, Mister Ford did put out a corresponding email and recommendation on, on. If the commission has to reopen, he would look at resuming. Uh, parking fees and then going to the assigned parking on first and second level and then issuing the. Open random parking at the third level. Uh, that portion there requires a little bit of guidance on what verbiage is gonna be on the signage. Because we haven't charged for parking on third level before it's been opened, free parking. We need to have some sort of verification process to hopefully to. The employees do everything before we can. Just say, now you have to pay and the sheriff's gonna start ticketing if you don't have a permit. So what does that verbiage look like? When does that get in stated? The engineer's recommendation is open. At meeting with the, uh, with Hudson Ordner, re- representative from A two S today and Dan Jorgensen from RSI. RSI will be demobilized and offsite entirely on the fourteenth. If, if it were up to me, my. Uh, recommendation would be then the ramp would be reopened on the fifteenth, they're gonna be demobilized, the barricades will be down, they will be gone. There will be nothing left behind of them, what does that reopening look like to the commission, we gave that direction. Uh, we do have that email from Mister Ford that we sent out last week. I did have a conversation with Ms. Field and she has uh. Input on what. She feels as well on, on what that opening would look like as well, so. Where do we go from here on that is, is the question. It's safe, it's open, it's make money.
And so the conversation that um Mister Dreschowski and I had is just. There's definitely the option that Mister Ford laid out. The conversation surrounding that was always when all the repairs were done. So a second option, just for your consideration. Would be reopen it in the way that it was before, so third floor still was open parking. Um, that we wouldn't have to worry about signage and things. We could reinforce and reinstate the current parking rates. Instead of the new ones, that's just a, a second option that may be a little bit quicker to do. And a little more efficient. Um, ultimately, it's up to you. Um, we just, we happened to have a conversation and, and it has been brought up that. Questions from employees saying, well, I thought we weren't gonna raise any rates until the parking ramp was complete. So that's just my input to your consideration.
Yeah, Mister Ford, can you comment on this?
Yeah, Mister Chair, members of the commission, all the decision of the commission was when the ramp reopens. That um, in fact, the assigned parking and it was the commission's decision that when the ramp reopens. It would be the new parking fees. Um, there's been multiple correspondence from myself and Mister Dreschowski to the employees about the process. Um, we also knew that going into this that most likely. Uh, RSI would have to be back to finish some repairs in the spring. So it's, that, that was commission decision, close the ramp and, and when the ramp reopen to reinstate the new parking fees. The only thing that for a logistics standpoint is um. Parking on the top level, so. Um, right now, the, the parking permits are blue for, for anyone that parks in there. Um, I park on the second level, obviously my, I have the blue pass, my fees will be adjusted, we knew that was coming. Um, probably wanna think about a different color pass for the top level, right, because that'll be a different fee. The other, just the other thing, uh, that when the commission made the decision, when the new fees were implemented. Um, that was also going to adjust the courthouse parking fee as well, that was gonna go from fifteen to twenty-five, so. It's, yeah, it's the commission's decision, uh, so I think if the engineer is saying it's safe. We know there's gonna be leakage, we've been dealing with that for years, but um. I think to the, the parking ramp, the, the county's losing a lot of revenue right now and. Um. What the significant investments that the county's made into the ramp, you've been subsidizing the ramp for many years, you still will, but. Uh, the opportunity is there to reopen at your discretion and implement the new fees, which is what we had agreed on once.
Just one quick question from Mister Dreschowski. If we open, reopen it now, are there any spaces that aren't gonna be open or is the whole ramp gonna be open temporarily until they fix it and. Finish it in the spring?
So until we would be reopened, uh, which would be. Say case in point fifteen. Uh, until it would be reopening, right now they are installing the tie connectors on the expansion joint. So on first floor, for instance, there will be four spaces that will be barricaded. Because they will be working off of scissor lifts and installing those tie connectors on the second floor, the first floor. When they leave on the fifteenth, there will be no spaces blocked or barricaded off until they return. Again, the construction work that they have to do next year is still very extensive. There's a lot of concrete yet to repair out there on the third level. And a lot of demolition to remove, there's roughly by square footage, there's somewhere in the forty to fifty yards of concrete. Or there's still, once they demo it out, and they can't demo it all out at once because. That will affect the integrity of the structure standing, so it's a little bit here, a little bit there, they, they make it all come together, so there's still. Extensive repair to be made next summer before it's all tied back together as it's supposed to be. Uh, but.
Space, I'm pretty sure that there will be no concrete falling on our heads.
Will we have, will we have potentially gravel or sand from rocking panels yet? In that area that have been rocking now for whether it be five or ten or fifteen years? Will we have that? Yes, we will not have structurally, we won't have. Fifty or under three hundred pieces. All of drum ceilings, right now at this point, they have cleaned those potential. Fall hazards up with all of the demo and repair that they've done thus far. That's comprehensively in their assessment of where it's at right now. So they're confident uh walking in with Hudson from A two S as well as with Dan today. Uh, they have, they have made some big progress out there, are they done? No. It's significantly harder than I was to before.
Mister Ross. Uh, Mister Chair, I, I guess I would recommend that we open, open the ramp fully and assess the fees. Starting the eighteenth of November, which is a Monday. And um. Mister Ford, you, what, what do you think of that, the eighteenth of November, because up to the fifteenth, there's still gonna be some slots. Where they're putting ties in, right?
Tie connectors will be installed until roughly Tuesday.
If those are not gonna be available, then we just wait till the eighteenth and then, then open it up.
In three, in a little bit, a second.
I think Commissioner both.
So.
Commissioner Ross, are you suggesting the previous fees that we charge or the new fees?
The new fees.
We voted on those.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I didn't hear, do we have a motion in there?
I made the motion, yes.
And. Mister Russ in second?
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion, uh, well, uh, how about the issue of, of. I think uh Mister Ford mentioned that the passes for the top floor could be twenty-five dollars a month with the.
That's what the commission had agreed on, yes sir.
Yeah, and uh, it's like, it's a red tag or something, that you could park anywhere on the top floor, it won't be assigned spaces, right? Make a purple, this is Vikings country.
How about red and gold?
Well, green and gold.
Here we go, San Francisco Forty Niners, oh my gosh.
If I may.
No. Oh, alright, uh, any further discussion?
Phil had something else.
If I may, in regards to the third floor and then regardless of the permanent color, whatever. Um, proper signage out there will, I'll have to order those, we, we order through three D specialties. I might not have signage by these, just simply because what's the verbiage look like? I need to post that at each entrance as well as probably on the third floor of the ramp. And I guess what's the verbiage going to be on?
Parking on the third, third floor requires a red. Hang tag or something. And maybe we don't start, maybe we reopen and then put those signs up when. When the signs come in and, and we can get tags to people who want it when.
It needs to, it needs to be pretty clear and directive on. Okay, the first and second floor are assigned spaces, third floor is open random parking. Because even for the SO to enforce improperly parked cars or improperly permitted cars. They also found the direction, well, uh, uh, the city candy's probably not gonna wanna send a deputy over here to take his cars if. They don't really know what they're taking.
Well, until, until you get your signage, let's just not deal with that third floor. They can just park up there and move, when your signage is in, then it'll, it'll be understood.
Yeah.
You know, and permitted at that time, but not before then.
Yeah, I, that makes the most sense.
Yeah.
Could we potentially reinstate the fee or do the new fees effective December first? Because we typically bill monthly. We, we bill monthly, it's a deduction on people's paychecks.
Yeah, whatever.
So, so that needs to be in your.
I'll make the, uh, modify my motion then. But if I, like, the, the, the fees, or the fees would be starting December first and uh.
From this motion so that it all fits.
Yes.
Alright, further discussion?
Phil still needs verbiage on what the signs need to say. Do you have a recommendation as to what the signs could say?
Something to the effect on the entrances would be first and second floor assigned permit only parking, third floor permit random parking. Um. That would be, in my opinion, that would be clear direction.
We have the two hour parking.
Yeah, we got four parking on the main floor.
Two hour, yeah, but Mister, Mister Chair, I think the, the verbiage that we currently use is pretty. Pretty well accurate, we would just need to add verbiage on the third level that is by permit, I, I don't think we have to. The commission needs to debate the verbiage and the sign, we have it, and I was, I was just gonna say that December. Delaying it maybe to December first is a good plan because finance will need to get letters out to our residents who. Live in apartments as well about the new, oh, sure, policy, so.
They're all over it there.
They are.
Alright, do we have the motion, uh?
The way it needs to be now, well, the motion need to be modified December first, right? And the fees would start December first, the letters need to go out to.
Alright. All the apartments, the letters. Right, here, no further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify what they say, aye?
Aye.
Closed?
Second, second segment of ramp subject is. This project with RSI with A two S. Was approved for the construction, for the renovation of this ramp without contingencies on. The dollar amount for the completion of the project. It's been identified throughout this work now since it began in April to this point, there's. A portion of electrical work that wasn't part of the scope of work that is necessary to be done. In order to do this renovation complete. It's not in the scope of work, it wasn't, it, it's not part of the total construction cost that we have. We received a change proposal, which is in your packet, this page four. From RSI. Which. Both in, that's in uh Jay Clevins. Uh, the request for proposal from Restoration Systems, if it's not page four, it's very close to that. Mister Clevins' opinion on the, on the value, they're exceptionally high on this price as well as mine. I was suspecting a fifty to sixty thousand dollar change proposal. Jay said I was a little low, he said seventy-five would have been realistic. Their change proposal price was a hundred fifty-four thousand three hundred dollars. In my interpretation, that's the, I don't wanna do it price.
Yeah.
Uh. Mine too. We, we do need to do this work, in talking with Ms. Nelson, um. We don't have capital improvement money, but we could, we could fund it out of cash carried forward if we can find it at a reasonable rate. That's palatable to Mister Cleveland and I. What I would recommend with this change proposal is we reject it. And Mister Cleveland, I give her on a different proposal from alternate contractors. That's the direction I'm asking, if, if you has the commission approve, you reject this, we reject this.
I make that motion to.
Reject, like Commissioner Ross?
I would.
Commissioner Hagan? Uh, any further questions of Mister Medes? Any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Closed?
Thank you, that's all we have.
Bringing that to our attention, that's great. Alright, um. Tracy, do you wanna explain the next item that we have to, um, work on that is the uh. The township hearing on minimum sales prices.
Mister Chair, or you. I can, I can do that, this is, you're, you're just voting to set the minimum price on these homes that, that the county has. Essentially at the foreclose on.
I believe Debbie had sent me an email saying that we need to open up public hearing and allow individuals.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanna reach out over there.
Anyone from the township, or any from, one from the public can, um. Address the minimum sales price they should sell.
Yes, and the hearing seems adjusting to be set is on uh, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Mister Chair.
Clock and the county commissioner.
Mister Chair. What, over here, Michelle?
So, are you setting a time for this hearing or you're adjourning to do this hearing?
Oh, and she said the.
So, so what there's, so Sarah, what this, what Ms. Nelson is asking for right now. Is that you approve the recommended minimum sales prices, but this is the moment where you invite anyone from the public to make comments or object. If there isn't, you'll make a motion uh to approve the minimum sales prices and then what you're.
And then the sixth of nineteen. And then sales to nineteen.
Correct, yes sir.
Alright.
Logistically, it has to be a hearing.
Yeah.
Besides, why they have to adjourning the one, enter the hearing, ask the question, do the stuff.
Yeah.
You have to do that, I need, but what we need is a motion to adjourning the meeting and enter the hearings.
I will motion to adjourning.
Here for peach, all in favor?
Aye.
Voted? Alright, adjourning, we are now in the the hearing and I. Is there any, I don't see any members in the public who have anything to bring to the hearing. Unless maybe Mister West is sitting there not telling us. What are we talking about? Alright, since there's no one uh uh here, um. Do we need to make a motion then that the uh sale will be on the November nineteenth? Go back to our, correct, our meeting and I need a motion?
Aye, aye.
Alright, we're now back into our county commission meeting and. We can uh. We need a motion tomorrow on the sales prices and set forth in our package.
Okay.
And then here in. The uh sale date will be November nineteenth, twenty twenty four, at two o'clock in this room. Okay, who wants to add a pet? Second by Commissioner Vega. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Voted? Best to them. Okay. Okay, then uh, our best for West, you're up.
Any chair members of the board, two items for consideration tonight, um first one is our annual maintenance certification with the DOT. Um something we do every year. They asked us that are we maintaining our roads in a good safe condition? I believe we are, I would recommend approval. And for. I want approval.
Second.
And in just especially.
My motion includes uh air signature.
I am, okay.
There would be chairs, signature, uh attorneys and auditors.
That's right, all that includes all three of those.
You didn't hear me say that?
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Thank you, my second item for consideration is um. The Gilby shed purchase of the Oppagard um implement property. Um earlier than, well, since March of twenty three. We approved um the purchase of that property and here we are finally coming. Coming to closing on it, um the purchase agreement would stipulated the price can be uh. Closing date sometime in January or February of twenty twenty five. Has coming up, the real question is. Um. That like where the funds come from. And I would request that we continue the the similar model of. How we've been fixing all of our county sheds throughout the county, our delivery shed where it was. Roughly split fifty fifty between the capital improvement fund and the other half comes out of the highway department fund. And. Um that's my first request, the second is if that passes then. For um chair signature designated representative at the time of closing, when that happens.
How much was that?
The total price was, a agreed price was three hundred and fifteen thousand. We did a thirty thousand earnest money down payment, so the balance is two hundred and eighty-five thousand plus. Couple thousand for closing costs, um but. If I would ask if we split the three eighty-five, so it'd be a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred. Um and I'm making this request now because usually we don't do capital improvements. Money projects until like uh April or May or later in the year, but this one is. Hoping to happen in January or February, so.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have a question, did you visit with um Ms. Nelson about using half from the. Cash carry forward or from the or that county um? Capital?
Yes, I did briefly, um this year is obviously tapped out. And it's my understanding there'd be funds available next year, but I can't say a hundred percent of them, so. If we do wanna postpone it till maybe Ms. Nelson is back or if somebody else knows, that's certainly okay, we have time.
I, Ms. Nelson been informed that this would be coming up and she said that the Gilby project could come from the twenty twenty five capital improvement.
Okay, okay.
No problem.
Well, thank you, can I take it to this?
Got it.
Alright, so I'll put that in motion with chair signature.
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the? Motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Voted? Thank you very much. By the way, when I was putting up a. Election sign out there, one of the guys went on the counter and said, oh, so you guys are buying the building and having your jobs go away? I mean, yes, but no. And he said, by the way, I was retiring anyway. Yes.
Have they moved in either stuff out, I remember being there, it's just something, all the nuts and bolts and all the things that were.
Yes, they had a uh resource auction here a couple of months ago and I think most of the stuff has moved out. For the board's awareness, we did buy a couple items, uh like an air compressor. And uh office desk. And um. A frame thing we can lift equipment up with and it was another staple toolbox. So we bought a couple of things that were nice, the air compressor was really handy, it's all plumbed in and wired in already, so that made a lot of sense, but. Um. And then we did, tomorrow we will close on our Northwood property. Chairman Egan signed the closing documents today, I have that check ready to go and uh so that. That project's moving forward as well too and um paving of Eagle Avenue is done, we finished that. Ten days ago or so, two Fridays ago, it great, turned out good. So we really lucked out, that weather was amazing again, so.
Mister West said you could do eighty miles an hour on it.
So, thank you.
The next item is the State Attorney's Office, but I think you got a request to perhaps table this. I can for today?
Chairman Egan, uh we'd request that we table this issue and put it on the that number for all the next commission meeting.
Any objection to that?
No.
Yeah, we don't need a motion for that, we'll just do that. Then uh. Committee reports.
Did you forget, you still forgot the county.
County administrator, did anyone disagree with that?
I just figured you've earned enough from me today. No, I I have nothing for the board, I'll just send a note out to the Cobb and the courthouse about the parking. But I have nothing for the board.
Thank you.
It was for peach.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Hagan?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
One people canceled, so I got one more of them left, my thumbs up, my thumbs up, um. And there's a little, I guess I'd say, I don't know, consternation is the right word between the Speedway and the Fairborn. You know, a long term type of deal, I don't have any details, but I can just tell you it's a little bit tense. Let's see, extent of my reporting.
For us, okay, um. I would like to uh schedule an administrative services meeting for November nineteenth at three o'clock. In the afternoon. Uh. Depending on how this uh sales tax. Or property tax deal goes through, uh we need to uh move on the sheriff's department. Uh. Building uh and and issue the uh to go ahead uh. On that low bid by an apartment. But um so I would like to schedule that for three o'clock on uh November nineteenth.
That's a commission day, so we do the.
Two o'clock is the uh. County tax.
And uh also on that date. Uh the bids came in on on the jail furniture. And youth assessment center today at our. Uh bi-weekly meeting or I guess every other week. And so. I would like to have the commission uh on the nineteenth also approve that bid, Mister Ford. Will be going through those bids and uh. They also have another meeting. On Thursday, um to look at the uh. Uh infirmary, I believe.
Correct.
To see what additional furnitures or whatever they need in there, but I would, at this time, you know, in order to get that stuff here. We need to uh deal with that bid uh on the nineteenth also, so I'd like to talk about that at that time. But other than that, that's all I got.
And I have nothing to add. So. We have any business or new business that uh Debbie Nelson has on you?
I did not receive any affection this time.
Okay. Any course, course bottles up there?
Yep, so from Dave Kidd's Grand Forks, just a a thank you. And it's brand agreement um for services, that was done. Prior with safety kids from coming at some. And then as well as. The uh. The note about the sixty-first annual joint North Dakota water prevention and irrigation workshop. Uh December tenth, we've been looking at this.
I don't know if we've ever had anyone intend that, but if you're interested that. Then you might stop me. And any further, we couldn't agree a second, huh?